374, down to the third reading file. And going back in the numerical order of bills on the agenda. The next bill is 285. And Senator Frank Uggan, you are recognized.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
No, we're still on 285.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and for allowing us to continue our conversation on Bill number 285. That's 33. I'd like to move for its place into the third reading file. Madam Speaker, with a couple of amendments to be made.
Senator, if I remember correctly, it's already, we just kind of set it aside. So, are you okay? It's just to continue now with-
We have two amendments.
-amendments that, of course, and questions that were asked. The, yeah, I have everybody that signed up for it already had spoken. So, and so maybe now, in your conversations with others, you have an amendment. Well, first of all, before I do, because maybe you might want to do it when you're going to close, is there anybody else who would like to speak on 285?
Wasn't this my speaker's amendment?
No, that one failed. All right, so there's nobody else in here who would like to speak. So, I will recognize then the author, and I understand you do have some amendments.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and again, good afternoon to yourself and to our fellow colleagues. Madam Speaker, I do have a couple of amendments. If you recall, our previous discussion on Bill number 285, that's 33, there were two major concerns that were brought up. One was because the HIPAA, the Harmon Industrial Park Association, will be conducting work in refurbishing public roadways. There was a concern by the Oversight Chair as to why DPW is not part of the proposed legislation. So, Madam Speaker, I do have an amendment, and I want to thank our legal counsel for assisting in the preparation of this. And this is to add the following amendment to line nine on page eight of the bill, to add a new subsection 7771-0E to section two of the bill to read, "The Department of Public Works shall have regulatory oversight, to the extent appropriate, of the rehabilitation and improvement of the Harmon Industrial Park roadway envisaged by this act to include, but not be limited to, the architectural and engineering design described in this section." So, Madam Speaker, if I can request consideration and approval of that amendment, please.
On the amendment.
No objections.
No objections to the amendment. So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there was another issue that was brought up in regards to ensuring that there's no- The term that was used by our good Vice Speaker was, he questioned whether, in fact, the proposed legislation would have detrimental reliance. And that is, if, in fact, my understanding of his concern is that if, in fact, we commit to the A and E, is there detrimental reliance that the government, by virtue of committing to that, is committing to the subsequent Phase Two and Phase Three, which would be the upgrade of the roadway, in addition to possibly accessing or acquiring private properties? So, there was an amendment, again, prepared by our legal counsel, and I want to thank them for their, thank our legal counsel for his assistance. And this would be to add a new section four, which would read, "No waiver of immunity. Nothing in this act shall be construed as a waiver of sovereign immunity by the Government of Guam, for which any action, either in law or in equity, may lie." And my understanding that from our legal expert, that, in fact, this would address Vice Speaker Cruz's concern.
So, this is a new section?
That's correct, Madam Speaker.
Yeah, so it'll be a new section, and then just to renumber.
Renumber the severability clause.
On the amendment, no objections. So ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to close by thanking you and thanking our colleagues for allowing the placement of this piece of legislation on the agenda, and for really having some very good conversation in terms of looking at partnering with a number of businesses in the Harmon Industrial Park area that would like to assist the Government of Guam in refurbishing that particular road and a few of the arteries. I thank you for being open-minded, and I certainly anticipate that this is going to be a process that's going to benefit not only everyone that's conducting their business in Harmon, but also the residents there and the entire island community. So, I thank you for your consideration or discussion on this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. And on the motion to send 285 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill number 369, Senator McCready, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to send Bill 369, Committee on Rules, to the third reading file and discuss.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 369 is introduced as a way, and we've heard it a lot this session, as a way of being a little more creative with the financing and giving a little more autonomy to the Chief of Police, to spend some of the revenues that the department has received from the vehicle inspection, safety fees, and the registration renewal, that's the Ovis fees. What we are proposing in our bill, Madam Speaker, is that current law mandates that 30% of, it's a 70-30 split, 70% goes to maintenance and 30% goes to new cars. After having discussions with the Chief of Police and his committees, it was suggested and introduced as law, or as a bill, that we allow the Chief 100% autonomy to spend those monies on possibly buying new vehicles. As it stands right now, from 2013 to today, we roughly average a little north of $300,000 in the Ovis fees. And what the Chief of Police has been able to accomplish, as far as purchasing vehicles, is roughly about two vehicles with the 30% out of the 100%. If we were going to now give him 100% ability to use those revenues towards new vehicles, we're looking at anywhere from six to eight vehicles of purchasing for the Police Department, and that is just for patrol only. It costs about, roughly between $40,500 to fully dress up a police vehicle, and the final cost would be about there, $40,500. So, with this money, the Guam Police Department could solve that short-term problem of shortage of vehicles. I hope my colleagues can support this. The committee report has reflected that we have six yeses to pass, and that's a pretty good sign. And so, I hope we stay on that trend, Madam Speaker. But this is something that is a win-win situation. It's protecting the community and making sure that we have good vehicles. Thank you.
On the motion, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in support of this legislation, and just so that our people have a very good understanding in terms of the Ovis fees, this is the $15 that is assessed to every vehicle safety inspection that is conducted just prior to our registration of our vehicles, of which a large percentage of that goes to the Guam Police Department primarily for the procuring of vehicles. Right now, the existing law restricts only 30% that can be utilized to purchase new police vehicles, and/or to subsidize the use of privately-owned vehicles for police service. And what the good sponsor is proffering is to certainly give the flexibility to the Chief of Police. There's already accountability measures in terms of reporting and ensuring that not only the legislative body, but also the Governor's Office are aware of how these funds are being expended and how they're procuring the vehicles. So, that's, one of the issues is that only 30% of these resources can be used specifically for procuring new vehicles or for utilizing privately-owned vehicles for police services. The other aspect, Madam Speaker, is that 70% of the funds that are generally collected are, right now, in law, tagged to be used solely for the repair and maintenance of police patrol vehicles within the Government of Guam. The challenge is certainly being able to try to balance that, because if we don't have vehicles to repair, then obviously, the use of the 70% restriction, we would literally have money sitting in an account awaiting to be used. So, what the Chief has requested through the good sponsor is the flexibility to be able to ensure that he or she, any future Chief, has the flexibility to be able to procure brand-new vehicles, to be able to enter into lease arrangements, should that be necessary, or to be able to utilize whatever percentage of the funds for the maintenance, the upkeep, and the repair of vehicles. So, I believe that, Madam Speaker, the flexibility is warranted. It's certainly going to reinforce public safety out in the community, provide the Chief of Police with that flexibility in the use of this particular funding mechanism. And I certainly look forward to additional, brand-new police vehicles out in the streets as this law is enacted, or this proposal is enacted into law, and allows for the additional use and flexibility. So, I stand in full support of this proposal. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is anybody else? Mr. Vice Speaker?
Madam Speaker, I rise not so much in opposition to the legislation, I just want to caution everybody. A previous legislature wrote this specifically to make sure that 70% was set aside for maintenance. And I don't know about this theory that you have leftover money because you don't have any vehicles to fix. I thought we had photographs of vehicles sitting because there was no maintenance money. If it is the desire of the Oversight Chair, I'm hoping that within three months, we're not going to be back here and saying we need maintenance money. Maintenance has been the bane of Guan. Not only in maintenance of vehicles, but maintenance of buildings. We have a problem trying to figure out how to spell it, much less be able to understand what is needed. I really caution against this.
Anyone else who would like to speak on the motion? Senator, do you want to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank the body for their input. Just to, just touch on, just one thing that was brought up about the maintenance, and the Guam Police Department has been very fortunate in being able to have a public-private partnership with certain companies in our community to help them with the maintenance. This isn't, this isn't looking at a vehicle who's in a compound that doesn't work anymore, saying, "We can't fix it." Those are just, there's a thousand moving parts in this Police Department, and these are one of the issues that when the Chief of Police, who's there every day, who knows when the money's coming in and how to spend it, this is something that he requested. And I think if you look at his track record, it's been pretty outstanding from when he started. So, to undermine that, and to say that, you know, we're not going to maintain these vehicles, is kind of cutting the Chief short, and I think that's not the message that I want to send. But they're on the right track, and I think this will help them get to where they need to go. It's not the, obviously, not the end-all to all the fiscal problems with the Police Department or the government, but I think little by little, we have to take those steps to get to where we want to go. So, but I thank the speakers for their either opposition or support. I would like to also make a couple amendments as Senator Uggan, as a co-sponsor, and I know I spoke to you about this bill earlier, Madam Speaker. I don't know if you want to be a co-sponsor, but if you would like, and you as the third co-sponsor?
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And final amendment, just a technicality, I'd like for legal counsel to amend the title when it goes into the voting file, and then gross. Thank you.
Whether it was a general motion that was made earlier for any technical corrections that needed to be made, and normally what legal counsel would do is to make sure that the title-
Correct.
-does follow with the body.
Yes, I was just informed by legal counsel that they needed to change something, so-
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
So ordered. On the motion to send 369 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. 375, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 375-33COR as amended by the committee, and move it to the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it.
You may proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 375 basically seeks to reserve a particular portion of Oka Point, Lot 5173, to set aside a piece of property which is currently being used by a cultural group right above the Hilton there, and what's being passed around is a aerial photograph, which will show where this piece of property is. And what it proposes to do is actually to have here in the central part, northern part of Guam, a cultural center similar to what we have down in the south, Geppa Goo. It's an area which will be close by to the tourist district that would be accessible for the tourists to go to and be able to see for themselves the cultural artwork that we have available, and maybe even activities that they have. So, if you take a look at, and so basically, what it does is it just sets that property aside, which is approximately eight and a half acres, to be designated as the site for a Chamorro Cultural Center. Now, the group that's in there right now, they currently have a license to be there up until about, I believe, January, and then after that, the Chamorro Land Trust will have to then work on a new lease arrangement for that piece of property for a cultural, for cultural activities, should Bill 375 be passed. If you take a look at the aerial photograph that has been passed out for Bill 375, and put it side-by-side with the aerial photograph that was earlier passed out for Bill 374, you'll see where this property that's being set aside for the cultural center sits adjacent to and contiguous to the area that's being suggested up at Oka Point. So, regardless of whether, you know, it'll be, it'll basically be contiguous to the property that's being set aside by, that was being proposed by Bill 374. So, it's really a simple bill, Madam Speaker. It sets aside that property strictly for as a Chamorro Cultural Center, and that's all that it does. Thank you very much.
I'm going to take a brief recess. So, on the motion, is there anyone who would like to participate in the discussion of Bill 375? There being none. So, on the motion to send 375 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. 385, Senator Torres, you're recognized.
Mrs. Mossy, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the committee report was recently provided, as of today, in fact, and upon review of the committee report, I believe it's in the best interest-
On your motion first? Your motion to place-
Speaker, I move that this be, that this, no, that this be sent back to committee, and I'd like to explain why.
Oh, oh, okay, I understand. So, you would like to explain then?
Yes.
Okay, you may proceed.
Upon review of the committee report, it appears that the, a lot of the support that went into the writing of this bill, the formulation of the concepts of this bill, were not, were not supported in the committee report by testimony by the two agencies with whom I had consulted and spoken with. And so, I think that in order to make the bill more compelling and to garner the support that I would like for this bill to have by my colleagues, I believe that it's best that I refer it back to committee, so that we can allow for the committee report to be complete, evidencing the support of both the Chamber of Commerce and Guam Economic and Development Authority. I also would like to send it back to committee, because the committee report also contains some inaccuracies in my presentation, in how it was written, and I'd like the opportunity to just clean it up, you know, since it is a matter of public record. And so, with that, I respectfully ask that it just be brought back to committee, and then I can deal with the, with it at that point.
So, on the motion to send 385 back to committee, hearing no objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. 386, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
I'll see, Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move Bill number 386-33COR to the third reading, and if I can speak on it?
Yes, Senator, you may proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill number 386-33 is an act to adopt the rules and regulations governing the administration, development, and implementation procedures and guidelines of the Housing Trust Fund. The intent of this bill, Madam Speaker, is to approve the rules and regulations for the Housing Trust Fund, and that this trust fund will be the dedicated funding source for the Guam Housing Corporation's Housing Trust Fund programs. Section by section, Madam Speaker, it talks about the Housing Trust Fund will support the affordability and the accessibility of housing for the residents of Guam. Madam Speaker, this fund will not be commingled, and any unexpendated funds that's in the account, Madam Speaker, will remain in the account. The program can be used for housing programs under the Guam Housing Corporation. There is a 10% allocation for administrative fees. The corporation shall determine a percentage for each program, up to 10%. The fund shall not be used, Madam Speaker, to pay for any delinquent taxes, or fees, or other charges on properties assisted by Housing Trust Fund programs, Madam Speaker, and that the Guam Housing Corporation will be- and that the Guam Housing Corporation will be responsible for the administration of the Housing Trust Fund. Madam Speaker, this rules and regulations was set down to this August body, but as you and I know, just recently, the President of Guam Housing Corporation had just passed away, and he had been working really hard when he had come on board to make sure that the implementation of the rules and regs would go through. He did, you know, go through the chain of command, and apparently, sometimes when it goes through the process and through the chain of events, that, that it gets held up in some areas, and that's exactly what happened to this bill, but he never gave up, and right when we assured him that we were waiting for the clearances from the administration and the, and the Attorney's General's office, he too took the time to follow the process forward. So, it's, this is, it's in its form as submitted to this August body, and I hope my colleagues will support those efforts. Cesous Mossi, and with that being said, you and I have been working on housing issues, Madam Speaker, for quite a long time now, and I'd like to know, if you don't mind, if you want to be second co-sponsor. Okay.
On the motion— On the motion, hearing objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Anyone who would like to speak on the motion?
Third reading.
On the motion to send 386 to third reading file without any objections, so just looking at you, waiting for that hand to go up. Senator, as all done, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, you know, in general, I, I support the intent and whatnot. I do have a question, though, and that would be on page four, subsection three, it would be starting on line 13, and continues on to line 14. And basically, if I read it from the start, "The Board of Directors of the Guam Housing Corporation shall approve monies held in the fund for the improvement, preservation, or expansion of affordable housing," which I believe is the real main intent of this bill. However, the next phrase says, "to finance foreclosure prevention activities on Guam," and I suppose I just need to understand what that means. Are we talk—
Command.
Are we talking seminars? Are we talking helping families, are we bailing families out? Not sure what that means.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Just based on my understanding, Madam Speaker, this is part of the mission mandate of Guam Housing, and the rules and regulations were put to, together based on what's already an existing code, and that was part of the transition into—
So, it's where it used to say "or," but now it's not an "or," it's "to finance."
Well, it's a part of the program on all, for, for the utilization of the trust, Housing Trust Fund.
But what kind of activities, Madam Speaker, are we talking about?
Madam Speaker, we can take a minute break to look at the tech, legal technicality of it.
We'll take a brief recess.
Thank you.[807.97]
We're going to go ahead and set aside 386 until we were able to get some more answers from Guam Housing, and we're going to move on now as a matter of fact. I'm going to declare this session day as TC Ada Day, session day. Senator Ada, Bill 387.
Yes, please. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 387-33COR to third reading, and I would like to discuss it.
And is it as, okay, it's as introduced?
As introduced.
Okay, you may proceed.
Yes, Madam Speaker, as we're speaking, the page is Distributing Aerial Photograph, just so that you get an idea of where these lots are that are being rezoned. It's really a real simple lot. This all has to do with a project that Guam Water Works has to basically shut down the sewer lift station at the, across from Windward Hills there, the, what the heck's the name of that?
Rock 17Z Housing Area.
Baza Gardens, yeah. To basically take the wastewater from the Baza Gardens up in Windward Hills and to be, and to transmit that wastewater down to the new wastewater treatment plant in Aggett. But in order for GWA to be able to do that, they need to install a couple of pump stations along the way. So Guam Water Works has acquired the private properties, the needed private property from the private, from the owner, and that was, you know, it was a, it was a mutual transaction, mutually convenient transaction. And now what we need to do, just to basically close the loop on this, is to rezone that small piece of property that they're going to put the pump station on, from agricultural to a public facility zone. And so the aerial photograph just simply shows, you know, where these, these, where these lots are at, that, that is, that is involved in the, in where these two pump stations are at. So it's really a real simple transaction, and just to, I mean, aside from the Section 1, the legislative findings and intent, which is probably longer than the actual action clause. Section 2 is just to change the zoning designation from aid to public facility. And then Section 3 is that, the reversionary clause, if nothing happens within a year from the date of enactment, then the, and then it return, the, that lot returns, reverts back to an agricultural zone designation. But we don't have to worry about that because the, the work is actually already in place. The engineering firm is doing the necessary designs, and it'll be just a matter of time before they actually start then laying the lines down to the multimillion dollar wastewater treatment plant in Aggett. So if anybody has any questions, I'll try and answer it. Otherwise, so, so, you know, for the two lots that are being rezoned is down in an area, if you take a look at that first page on Bill 387 aerial photograph, on the upper left there, it says Lot 402-R10. That's a, that's an area that's located down by the Apprahites Officers Housing, down by the Apollacho Bridge. The other lot where this, where the pump station, the other pump station is to be constructed, is right up there by the, across from the Windward Hills Golf Course, and it's all along Route 17. So that's, that's all that Bill 387 does, Madam Speaker.
Can we take a brief recess? Questions were answered during that brief recess. So is there anyone who'd like to speak on the motion? There being none, so the motion to send 386, eh, 387 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Senator Ada on 393.
Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 393-33COR as amended to the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss it.
You may proceed, Senator.
So, Madam Speaker, what's being passed around right now, again, is another aerial map to give you some orientation of the lot that we are talking about. And, and basically what, what this bill does is, up there in, in Harmon area, Guam Water Works has had for the longest time, the Northern District Wastewater Treatment Plant. That's where all the wastewater comes from GGO, Anderson Air Force Base, Baragota, it all goes into there, gets processed, and then gets discharged out to the ocean. But that particular wastewater treatment plant really just provides a primary treatment, puts some chemicals in it, kills as much of the bacteria and whatnot, and then pumps it out. So the US EPA has, has ordered the Guam Water Works to upgrade its treatment capability to secondary treatment. And so in order for GWA to be able to do that, they need additional land to build the additional facilities that would allow them to then put that wastewater through a secondary treatment. And adjacent then to where the plant is located, and you'll see it in the first page of that Exhibit A that was just handed out, you'll see there, there's a shaded area in blue, and it says Northern District Wastewater Treatment Plant, GWA. That is the additional property that GWA needs to expand into. The existing wastewater treatment plant is directly to the southeast of that. Gosh, it's in real small letters there. But if you look on the second page, it'll show you, it'll show you a depiction of, on the bottom right, you'll see basically the configuration of the existing wastewater treatment plant, and then the, where the area is to be that GWA proposes to expand into. The area that GWA needs to expand into belongs to the, well, actually is Crown Land. And Crown Land is actually property that has no original landowners associated with it, but is under the, is under the guardianship of the Ancestral Lands Commission. And, and, and so these Crown Lands are actually intended to generate revenue.
Can we please keep the volume down? But I am listening.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I, I know you were listening. I was just having a hard time concentrating. So, so what's being proposed here is, and Guam Water Works has been in consultation with the Ancestral Lands Commission to purchase this 17 acres of ancestral, of Crown Lands. And, and of course, the purchase price, we base on whatever the appraised value is. Now, for the 17 acres of land, we're probably talking about, I don't know, if you figure, maybe the going rate there, I believe, is maybe around $30 per square meter, we're probably talking about $2 million. And so what would happen, according to the bill here then, is that when this sale transaction is completed, the money will be deposited into an account called the land bank account. And what, the funds in that land bank account is where the, when it finally gets dispersed, that's the fund that is dispersed to those landowners, the ancestral landowners, who will never get their lands back. For example, the owners whose land is where the GIAA runway sits on, the landowners where, that is in Naval Station. So from this land bank, these funds then will be used to basically divvy that out. The actual disbursement of these funds hasn't been affected at all because Ancestral Lands Commission is still waiting for the rules and regulations to be approved from the Attorney General's office. But basically, that's what, that's what this Bill 393 does. And the appraisal will be paid for by GWA. It will be, the appraisal shall have to be done by two different appraisers. One shall be selected by the Department of Land Management, and the other is, will be selected, of course, by Guam Water Works. Now, the appraisal, currently that land is a zone, hotel zone. So the bill calls that the property is to be appraised as a hotel zone land. In addition to that, GWA will have to pay for the survey of this property and have it recorded. And then the purchase price, of course, as I indicated, shall be based on whatever the appraised value is. Now, the bill requires that the two entities sit down and within 120 days to, to be able to finalize this transaction. And finally, in Section 3, the bill calls for rezoning of this property from hotel zone to public facility. And so that, Madam Speaker, is, is basically what Bill 393 does. Thank you.
We're going to take another recess for a moment. Senators Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I recognize the intent of this legislation, and I just had a couple of questions with regards to some of how the mechanics work in the bill. First of all, in, excuse me, on page 3, Section 2, subsection C, starting on line 24, it requires an appraisal to be done on the property, and that appraisal shall be paid for by GWA, and land management shall, shall select one of the appraisers. And I'm sure the appraisal is, of course, to determine the value of the property. But if you go to page 4, line 4, subsection E of the same section, under purchase, price, and transfer agreement, it reads that GWA shall work with the Guam Ancestral, Ancestral Lands Commission to determine an appropriate compensation for the property purchase. And so what makes my, my concern at this juncture, Madam Speaker, is we do an appraisal in Section C, but Section E kind of creates language where the price, the purchase price can be something other than what was appraised. It may be lower, as a matter of fact. And one of my concerns of that is, in the real estate industry, they base property valuations on comparables. And so if we have an appraisal done under Section C, and then a purchase and transfer of the property at a lower price under Section E, it not only affects the transaction between the two agencies, but it also affects the corresponding land valuations because of the real estate industry's practice of using like comparables when determining value. So I, I think that I would like some time to clarify why we're going to be appraising the property, but opening the door for a purchase price that may be different under Section E. That was one of my concerns. My other concern, Madam Speaker, was on page 3, lines 18 and 19. My other concern, Madam Speaker, was on Page 3, lines 18 and 19. Subsection B of Section 2, it reads, "The administrative transfer of property shall become effective upon enactment of this act." So the property will be transferred from the Ancestral Lands Commission to Water Works once we pass the bill, but the purchase transaction could happen later. I would obviously have to, because they wouldn't have been authorized to even appraise. And so even in the real estate industry, Madam Speaker, there's a timing factor where the property could be transferred now, but the valuations could change in the future. And because there is no set timeline for when this appraisal is to take place, and when this purchase price, I'm sorry, the purchase is supposed to be within 120 days of enactment. So we're going to transfer today, and we're going to purchase and transfer within 120 days based, and we're also going to have an appraisal done under Section C. So I would prefer, just mechanically, that the transfer shall be effective upon consummation of the purchase price and transfer agreement, and the purchase price and transfer agreement shall be based on an amount no less than the appraisal as determined in subsection C. So that's what I would probably prefer as an amendment, Madam Speaker, but it will take me some time to craft that language. So if I may request a set aside of the bill to be able to prepare the language in that effect.
So, Madam Speaker, if I may quickly respond.
Yes, Senator.
Yeah. So first of all, on the concern that was raised on Page 4, line, subsection E, that GWA shall work with GALC, what is meant there is that, remember, there's two appraisals that's got to be done. GWA shall pay for the appraisal of two, shall pay for the appraisal of property by two different appraisers. So usually what happens then is, when the two appraisers more than likely will not come in at the same appraisal value, so then they have to sit down and get, you know, arrive at the average of those two appraisals. So that is what actually is meant by they shall, GWA shall work with GL, GALC to determine that, what is that, you know, sweet spot between the two different appraisals. The second part on Page 3 there, about the administrative transfer, GWA is wanting to get in as soon as possible into the property so that they can start doing their survey, they can start doing their board testing while the, you know, finance people and whatnot are working on the necessary appraisals and whatever else. But the engineers want to get in there as soon as they can to start doing a lot of that preliminary work. And so that's the purpose for the administrative transfer upon enactment.
Oh, yes, Senator, right.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I appreciate the response, and it does make sense. I would prefer that we actually spell out the language under subsection E, that it shall be based on the median value of the two appraisals. And then the other, and then just the other concern too, just with respect to the administrative transfer of the property, is that on the appraisal in subsection C, the property is currently zoned H, and appraisal shall be based on the current zoning H. But once the administrative transfer takes place, it will be transferred as a, and regarded as Zone PF, a public facility zone. And so I'm not sure if appraisers can still, within the confines of the ethics of their profession, still appraise something at one zone when the law has already technically created as another zone. So it still may require that we have the appraisal done before the administrative transfer, perhaps that's something that we can clarify. But because we're trying to specify that the valuation shall be determined on an H zone, but the administrative transfer will take effect immediately and thus have it classified as a public facility zone, I don't know if they can still appraise it as an H when it's already legally a PF. So those are things, I guess, that we can perhaps clarify, Madam Speaker.
Okay. So, Senators, what we're going to do is, because we don't have enough time to do this, and there's several members here that would like to attend the investiture, that we will not have a quorum, so we will recess until tomorrow morning at nine.